Please stand for Playboy. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Lewis.
Haven't seen you in years.
Mrs. Nazarini?
Here.
Ms. Patel? Here. Mr. Toral?
Present.
Mr. Kramer?
Here.
Mr. Stevenson?
Mr. Kearney?
Here.
Ms. Zinski?
Here.
Thank you. We hopefully read all the recognitions.
Is that right?
Okay, no recognitions tonight. At this time, if there's any public, anybody in the public audience that wants to step up and make a comment, you step up to the microphone with your name and house.
Good evening, uh, State Department Board and, uh, the, uh, Superintendent. I asked the Vice President if I could come and speak at the Board meeting, and she said, "Why don't you, Mr. Wilson?" And I said, "I would." And it's, it's all good.
Rodney, you want to state your name and address your right?
Roger Wilson. The Bishop, Roger Wilson, 417th Street.
Thank you. I just want to make a statement. Are you a resident of Chargers, Los Angeles?
No, but I do work here. And I was, I asked the President, the Vice President, and she said, "I could come speak." And, um, I wanted to do that.
It's against our bylaws, the obvious bylaws. It's just, we're not, public comment is for citizens of this one.
It's all about, it's all about students. I mean, I'm not trying to call it a problem, but...
Right, but I think what you're saying, it's all geared towards the resident. That's why people have to come and give their name and add their son against you.
If you ever want to speak to us, we'd be glad to take your, your comments or send it to us, but we're not allowed to let residents speak.
But when can I, when, which, what, when can I do that? It's all benefiting students, but, but if that's what you want, that's, that's, there's no, there's no problem with it.
Yeah. If you don't like, won't your comments still be in?
Sure.
We'll, we'll, we'll come back.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Susan Allen. I live at 97 Upper Drive. Um, I'm here on the behalf of the kitchen staff. We came and got letters in the mail stating that there was hours that were being cut. We were losing a cook's position. We want to know, and I want to know, why is this when we're the lowest paid in the district? That hours are being cut when you're building a brand-new middle school? And to the other schools, the primary and the I.S., we have problems staffing everybody. It's hard to get people in here in the cafeteria to work three to four hours. And we're also, like I said, they're, they want to cut a cook's position. And I don't understand. I want you guys to justify it for me and everybody else, the girls in the kitchen, because they are here. Um, they're asking me questions, I have no answers. Um, like I said, you're building a brand-new school where, to my opinion, because I've been working for the district for 21 years, and I've been in the kitchen for 21 years, I've been running the middle school and the high school as a manager for the last 10 years. Now, I know you guys split the middle school and the high school now, but you have a manager over there, but you're also going to need two more cooks over there. Because the way things are, we have a pizza shop, we have a grill, we have the main line. There's three cooks and we have a baker. And me, myself, I being so short-staffed, because we only have maybe two subs, and one can only work a couple of days a week. And it's hard, because last year, I was actually, which I shouldn't have done, because according to our contract, but we were sending breakfast people to the other schools, because we had to fill them. And we're always working short up at the high school and at the middle school and the other schools. These girls are coming to me, wondering why their hours are being cut. I understand about the budget that I was told, it's like, what, somebody said 80,000 they lost this past year, okay? And like I said, why are we, the girls, their hours are being cut? It doesn't, it just doesn't add up to me when you're actually building a new, brand-new school. And you need positions over there. And why are we terminating six-hour positions and a cook's position? These girls, I already had one girl resign, I had two other girls quit. I mean, we can't afford that now, let alone just going by what we have. And there's also two people that quit at the other schools, the primary and the, at the I.S., I was told. I mean, I mean, can you guys help me out here? How I can address the girls, or how you guys can address the girls about the situation and the budget? I mean, I understand. And these girls have really worked hard for years. And always worked overtime. I mean, there was times where, you know, we could have just up and just left everything, but they didn't. They stayed, whether it was a half hour, whether it was an hour, they stayed until everything was done. And then after January, we get told that our, you know, you have to go home, you do your six hours and you leave. And it's not fair to everybody else, because the four-hour people are doing the work. My six hours are really busting their butts to do dishes and stay, and they've been getting like seven hours, they stay to do dishes, everybody stays. And then January comes and it's like, well, you guys are going to have to cut back on your hours. When, if we do that, nothing will get done. The dishes will stay until the next day. And that's what I'm afraid is going to happen now, because of the hours that are going to be cut. I have cooks that actually go in the dishroom, that do dishes. I have cooks at four hours, they, they really, these girls really bust their butts for this district.
Sue, let me, let me comment. I don't think there's anybody in this room who doesn't think that your staff, you, you come apart. I, I recognize that, and I think everybody else does, so, you know, we commend you for your effort, no question about it. When it comes to budget, Nutrition Inc. is a separate budget than our school district education budget.
I understand that.
Okay? And, and their budget, uh, for the last two years has not come in balanced. And what happens is, the difference between what is costing us to run the cafeteria and the negative balance in the budget comes out of the educational fund. And basically, we went back to Nutrition Inc. and said, "Listen, you have to balance your budget. There's, there's no way we want to continue to take money from our, our educational programs to, to fund your program. That program should stand on its own." And, and the recommendations they made were based on this long series of evaluations. It wasn't just about coming in and cutting people's hours. It was about what they evaluated, key times, key people, key hours, and, and came to that recommendation to Dr. White. And we, as a board, approved the recommendations to balance that budget. I, I don't know what else to tell you, other than, you know, we, we hope that as you start this school year, that, you know, the changes that have been made, um, you can work within. We can certainly take a look at what's going on down there as, as time goes by. We're not saying it's not going to change or it can't be changed, but I think based on the budget and what was, the decisions that were made and put in place, there's really not much we can do. I, I don't, I don't know, you know, we can, we can sit down and talk about it as time goes by, but that, those changes were concrete and evaluated. Nutrition Inc. helped us to do it, so... Uh, going forward, again, you can look at it, but, you know, beginning this school year, I think what is, is, we have to work with it.
I understand that, but I wish you guys would at least, actually, every once in a while, come in the kitchen, like the past year and the years before that. I know Patty Corsey always came in the kitchen and checked everything out and seen how, how everything was run, because actually, nutrition, uh, I mean, we have a lot of à la carte stuff that these girls do every day. And it takes time. And like I said, when you're cutting the hours, we're not going to have that time to do all the à la carte stuff that, that brings the money in, that the kids like. There's things that these kids like, that they have every day, is what I'm trying to say. It's just the, the productivity is what's going to hurt in the long run. And these girls, I mean, they care about the students, of course, obviously.
We, we, yeah, we recognize that. You guys all work hard and are doing the best thing you can for the kids and providing a good meal for the students. Let's, let's, let, let's let it start, let's see what happens.
Keep an eye on it.
Yeah, and we will stop that. And, I mean, we'll spend some time, okay, and see what's going on.
Okay, another thing, I do have a cook, that her position was cut. And she has benefits. What I'm afraid of is that if she doesn't stay as a cook, she's going to lose those benefits, which she needs. Not that we all don't need health insurance, but it's the situation that's bothering me, because they stepped her into a six-hour position without benefits. And once, you guys, whoever, once they, that cook's position is gone, I'm afraid it's not going to come back. And she's going to lose her health insurance, which she really needs. You know, I'm, I'm like looking out for the girls here, not just me, but from, I say my girls, but they're not. They are, but they're not. Just like I said, they're my students, that's my kitchen, because I guess I've been there for so many years, but... So, you guys can come in every once in a while and see and justify it, or once the middle school does get up and running for their kitchen, you know, but in the meantime, what am I supposed to tell the, the one girl that's losing her benefits?
Taking into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Superintendent's report?
Hey, Brian, a test is reported.
Yep. Thank you.
Last?
Yep. Okay. On to the dismissors' report.
Just note for the record that we had an executive session this evening to advance tonight's meeting, where we discuss personnel litigation.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to get a motion to approve the minutes from our meeting July 25, 2017, and August 8, 2017.
Zach?
Moved by Mr. Kearney, second by Mr. Corral, in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. On to the informational agenda. Education Foundation, any update on that side? Nothing there. Mr. Kramer, a pathfinder.
You know, I, um, I apologize, I missed Wednesday's meeting, and I still haven't had a chance to catch up. I'll summarize the meeting next, at our...
Thank you.
Bye.
Under Ms. Patel's absence tonight, so partway up the earth, chastened, but...
I'll have to report, you have to share.
Quiet, quiet summer for these kids. I know the finance community has reported, so...
That's, that's where the magic happens. He has all the answers. That's what my website's too. So, we reviewed a monthly construction summary, um, we reviewed our ICAM payments, as well as a PJ Dick summary, reviewed the billing from PSI and HF Lens. Uh, there was a total construction report that we reviewed, everything appears in line, um, there was no outliers or anything like that, nothing unexpected, which is good news. Um, we also performed a lengthy interview with a potential interim business manager that we're exploring, and we will be in further discussions with this person going next week, so, to come in and perform an interim, uh, business manager, manager duties for the next foreseeable future until we have one of this, on a permanent basis.
Thank you. Okay, on to the consent agenda. Anybody have any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda?
Six point eight should be removed. We should not have answered all of them.
I think it must be, right?
We're going to remove 6.8 from tonight's consent agenda, so if everyone wants to make any questions about that. We had bids come in that were faulty, so we, we decided to remove all the bids that came in and have them re-submit. Any questions or comments regarding any of them? Looks pretty clean tonight, there's...
Yeah.
You know, there's some trips in there for the kids.
Not that I knew over here.
Yeah, interim reporting for Plant Con.
You went over the construction and all that, the finance?
Yep. Okay, so can I get a motion to approve items 6.1 through, 6.11 excluding 6.8? Ms. Lesnick?
Here.
Seconded by Mr. Kearney, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Okay, moving right along. Uh, our action discussion items. So, I had brought this up at our last board meeting, that I wanted to talk about this with the board. In discussions with our construction team, uh, which I've been pretty heavily involved in the last month and a half, getting ready to get these kids back to school and see how the progress is going and everything else, one of the, one of the points that they have brought up to me, and they felt that was something that they'd like to address with the board, were, um, these blower tests that have been being done by HF Lens. And, and I've discussed this with PJ Dick and, and, you know, you as the board. And we feel that there's a very little value done, uh, being placed on the blower tests that are being done pre-finish-up of construction, the ones that are being done, you know, while the rooms are still, no drywall, no, no caulking in the windows, plastics being put up. So, I, I would just like to see if we could get HF Lens to agree to simply quit doing those tests during construction phase and come in and do the testing at, at the end of, uh, our, our architects saying, "Hey, the room's complete, the space is complete, it's, uh, it's, it's ready for testing." And, uh, you know, I, I believe that the $2,500 or so per test that we're, that we're spending, plus the time we lose in the testing, is, would be money well saved and time well, well saved as well. So, I, I would like to get, you know, a motion to approve us to at least open up that HF Lens contract and take a look at that.
Tony, could you have some additional commentary around what the implications are for remediating any issues that the testing could reveal?
Yes.
And then could you also talk about, uh, a bit of, you know, the dynamics of having the Lens folks on-site and what that means for, kind of, the tone during the construction?
Absolutely. Thank you for asking me those questions, Julie, because that is something we should talk about. So...
So, we, sorry, so we would still have them present and on-site and evaluating, you know, watching and overseeing the construction?
Correct. I think we'd all agree that there's a value to it.
There's, yeah, I, I agree.
And there's no lost time in that.
Right.
He simply oversees what the contractors are doing and...
In line with energy efficiency.
Correct. And, and, you know, some of the stuff he does on his walk around, actually, they pay attention to, and they're maybe more aware of doing a good job as a result of somebody looking over them. And, and truly, based on our contract with our architects and our prime contractors, if there is a deficiency and the test is conducted and at the end, it doesn't meet the requirements that were placed upon them, then the rooms would have, the correction would have to be made at their expense. So, I believe that there's really no risk here, and it's all upside. So, I, I just truly believe, based on their evaluation, that, you know, the blower testing is inaccurate, and that's putting mildly, during construction phase. And truly, the real number is, what do you get at the end? And if it's not what we expect, and if there are deficiencies in the construction, hey, they're responsible for correcting it, so...
What's the, what's the estimated number of tests, like, do you think?
Well, the way it's segmented, it's segmented to, uh, to be done in, you know, various ways, because they can't, they can't isolate rooms small enough to be able to do it, so... I, I anticipate there could be 20 to 30 more of these tests conducted prior to, prior to construction.
About $2,500 on average?
Correct. So...
Okay.
Yep. So, I'd like to get a motion to approve us re-examining the HF Lens contract and asking to have the blower test while construction is being done. Okay? So, Mr. Kramer? Seconded by Mr. Corral, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you. At this time, if there's anybody else that would like to make a comment?
Yes.
Yes.
I had no intentions of making any public comment when I came here this morning to meet you guys. My name's Bob Prior, I live at, uh, on Washington Avenue in Bridgeville, my family's been here near about 200 years, but, uh, is the, I'm sure you're all totally frustrated with the 50 years of traffic congestion that's been present on the Washington Pike corridor that's parallel to I-79. This road is extremely important in many ways, and the traffic congestion, in my opinion, has not been addressed efficiently by PennDOT or the county. And as the leaders of the most intellectual educational institution in the area, I think it would be good, excuse me, if you allow us to familiarize you with the problems and the solutions, and if you would in some way express your opinion of supporting some of the recommendations that were suggested. Collier Township, something that's directly related to you, I've been working with the manager of Collier Township for the past couple of months. PennDOT has proposed an inadequate widening on Washington Pike between the, the Nadium Road intersection and the access road, it's I-79. It'd be totally useless. Uh, that four-lane road has been reduced to a two-lane road, because there are 60 cars, as you, we all know, that sit in opposite directions in the center two lanes, facing in opposite directions. Uh, our plan is to have the road made six lanes wide and keep the, the existing two center lanes, as they should be functioning properly. But I want to get into the details, I had sent letters to, uh, Dr. White previously about this, more, I've more than just letters, I've sent him highly detailed packets of information with drawings and commentaries going back over 20 years. But anyway, I'd just like to suggest to you, as a matter of fact, as a result of some of our efforts, uh, the former director at PennDOT, Dan Cessna, suggested that a task force be created to solve some of these problems. It includes Bridgeville, Southgate, Collier, and Albert St. Clair. Might be good if you have one of your representatives attend those meetings, but I'll try to get more information to you on that, so you understand what's going on.
Right, it's a mess.
Pardon me?
It's terrible, it's a mess.
Yeah, and incidentally, that directly, that's suppressed the economic development along this corridor by 50 percent. We did a study just two years ago, where 50 percent of the people living in this market area, which is, includes your school district, have been detouring around the Bridgeville, Collier, Southgate business district for 35 years. The accessibility, the ease with which you can raise taxes, which you have to do, is necessary for you to do, would be much more readily paid by the businesses and the people. We can do things to stimulate the economy. I, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good question. It's good.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President, and the school board will allow me to have these few words. As most of y'all know, that this calendar year will be my blast, and, um, I've had a great run here, and I've had a great time observing your kids, uh, and enjoyed talking to a lot of them, and giving them a lot of good advice to succeed in life. Uh, but I wanted to come and, uh, address you guys in a formal, uh, way, uh, that would help benefit the kids. And, uh, I always tell people, it's all about the kids. Uh, that being said, uh, there's a couple, uh, groups that I'm trying to help, um, in the city of Pittsburgh, and one of them is the Pittsburgh Black Media Federation. And what they have every year, they have a journalism workshop in honor of Frank Bowden, who was a legendary reporter here in, uh, the Pittsburgh area, and I have information, if the board would like to have it, I can pass it out to you.
Thank you.
And that every, every summer around the end of July or begin, uh, the middle of July, they have, um, what they call a journalism workshop, which is very intensive, from broadcasting to podcasts to, you name it, uh, some of them even do live broadcasts with KDKA. And I said, "Well, let me approach my school board at my district." And I said, "I know our money is tight, but I will try to fundraise $1,500, if I can do that, if the school allows me to use the facility, I'll turn it sometime or another." Uh, that maybe we could have four of our, four or five of our kids, it don't, it doesn't matter what color they are. We always preach in diversity, and that's what it's all about. That, I don't know, maybe the school board, or maybe, uh, the superintendent, uh, will pick four or five kids up at the high school to participate, free of charge. I'll, I'll raise the $1,500. Uh, I know sometime they have where they stay at Point Park University for a week in the dorms, or sometime they have to go four consecutive, four consecutive Saturdays. And at the end of it, they have a graduation at Point Park University. Uh, and they go over certain things where the parents can come and, and see what their kids have achieved. They get a certificate, uh, and some other type of thing. Uh, and it would be a good thing for our students, in my opinion, to be involved in. Uh, and I would hope that the school board would go along with it, uh, because it's a very good program. As you well know, we are always talking about, uh, diversity as well as technology in CV. And I always want the best for our kids at CV. They all know, I always tell them, be the best students in the world. And I want them to be the best students in the world, literally. The other is, uh, now I'm sure the attorney will get it, a kick out of this. The Fairview Park in Murraysville, uh, he might know where that is, right there in Murraysville, Salem, town something, I don't know, I'll try to get familiar with it, but I think he may know. It's the first and only African-American amusement slash park in Pennsylvania and east of the Mississippi. And I...
That's where the magic happens. That's what my wife says, too. So, we reviewed a monthly construction summary. We reviewed our ICAM payments as well as a PJ Dick summary. We viewed the billings from PSI and HF Lens. There was a total construction report that we reviewed. Everything appears in line. There was no outliers or anything like that. Nothing unexpected, which is good news. We also performed a lengthy interview with a potential interim business manager that we're exploring, and we will be in further discussions with this person probably in the next week. So, to come in and perform an interim business manager duties for the next foreseeable future until we have one of these on a permanent basis.
Thank you. Okay, under the consent agenda. Anybody have any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? We're going to remove 6.8 from tonight's consent agenda, so if anyone wants to make an implication about that. Three of the bids come in that were faulty, so we decided to remove all the bids that came in and have them re-submitted. Any questions or comments regarding anyhow? Looks pretty clean tonight. There's some trips in there for the kids. Yeah, interim reporting for Plant Con.
You went over the construction and all the finance.
Yep. Okay, so can I get a motion to approve items 6.11 excluding 6.8? This is Lesnick, seconded by Mr. Kearney. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? So moved. Moving right along. Our action discussion items. So, I had brought this up at our last board meeting, that I wanted to talk about this with the board. In discussions with our construction team, which I've been pretty heavily involved in the last month and a half, getting ready to get these kids back to school and see how their progress is going and everything else. One of the points that they have brought up to me, and they felt that was something that they'd like to address with the board, were these blower tests that have been being done by HF Lens. And I've discussed this with PJ Dick and you as the board. And we feel that there is a very little value being placed on the blower tests that are being done pre-finish of construction. The ones that are being done while the rooms are still, no drywall, no caulking in the windows, plastics being put up. So, I would just like to see if we could get HF Lens to agree to simply quit doing those tests during construction phase and come in and do the testing at the end of, our architect saying, hey, the room's complete, the space is complete. It's ready for testing. And I believe that the $2,500 or so per test that we're spending plus the time we lose in the testing would be money well saved and time well saved as well. So, I would like to get a motion to approve us to at least open up that HF Lens contract and take a look at that.
Tony, could you have some initial commentary around what the implications are for remediating any issues that the testing could reveal?
Yes.
And then, could you also talk about a bit of the dynamics of having the Lens folks on site and what that means for the tone during the construction?
Absolutely. Thank you for asking me this question, Tony, because that is something we should talk about.
So, we would still have them present and on-site and evaluating, watching, overseeing the construction.
Correct. I think we all agree that there's a value to it.
There's, yeah, I agree.
And there's no lost time in that. He simply oversees what the contractors are doing.
In line with energy efficiency.
Correct. Some of the stuff he does on his walk around, actually, they pay attention to and they're maybe more aware of doing a good job as a result of somebody looking over them. And truly, based on our contract with our architects and our prime contractors, if there is a deficiency and the test is conducted and at the end, it doesn't meet the requirements that have been placed upon them, then the rooms would have to, the correction would have to be made at their expense. So, I believe that there's really no risk here and it's all upside. So, I just truly believe, based on their renovation, the blower testing is inaccurate and that's putting mildly during construction phase. And truly, the real number is, what do you get at the end? If it's not what we expect or if there are deficiencies in the construction, hey, they're responsible for correcting it.
What's the estimated number of tests, do you think?
Well, the way it's segmented, it's segmented to be done in various ways because they can't isolate rooms small enough to be able to do it. So, I anticipate there could be 20 to 30 more of these tests conducted prior to construction.
About $2,500 on average?
Correct. I'd like to get a motion to approve us re-examining the HF Lens contract and asking to have the blower test while construction is being done. So, Mr. Kramer, seconded by Mr. Core, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you. At this time, if there's anybody else who would like to make a comment? Yes?
I had no intention of making any public comment when I came here this evening to meet you guys. My name's Bob Pryor. I live on Washington Avenue in Bridsville. My family's been here near about 200 years. But, I'm sure you're all totally frustrated with the 50 years of traffic congestion that's been present on the Washington Pike Corridor that's parallel to I-79. This road is extremely important in many ways and the traffic congestion, in my opinion, has not been addressed sufficiently by PennDOT or the county. And as the leaders of the most intellectual educational institution in the area, I think it would be good, excuse me, if you allow us to familiarize you with the problems and the solutions and if you would in some way express your opinion of supporting some of the recommendations that we're suggesting. Collier Township, something that's directly related to you. I've been working with the manager of Collier Township for the past couple of months. PennDOT has proposed an inadequate widening on Washington Pike between the Nadium Road intersection and the access road to I-79. It'd be totally useless. That four-lane road has been reduced to a two-lane road because there are 60 cars, as we all know, that sit in opposite directions in the center of two lanes facing in opposite directions. Our plan is to have the road made six lanes wide and keep the existing two center lanes as they should be functioning properly. But I don't want to get into the details. I had sent letters to Dr. White previously about this. More than just letters, I've sent him highly detailed packets of information with drawings and commentaries going back over 20 years. But anyway, I'd just like to suggest to you, as a matter of fact, as a result of some of our efforts, the former director at PennDOT, Dan Cessna, suggested that a task force be created to solve some of these problems. It includes Bridsville, Safi, and Collier, now for St. Clair. It'd be good if you have one of your representatives attend those meetings. But I'll try to get more information to you on that so you understand. Yeah, and incidentally, that's suppressed the economic development along this corridor by 50%. We did a study just two years ago where 50% of the people living in this market area, which includes your school district, have been detoured around the Bridsville, Cocker, Safi business districts for 35 years. The accessibility, the ease with which you can raise taxes, which you have to do, it's necessary for you to do, would be much more readily paid by the businesses and the people. We can do things to stimulate the economy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President, and the school board will allow me to add a few words. As most of y'all know, this calendar year will be my blast and I've had a great run here and I've had a great time observing your kids and enjoyed talking to a lot of them and giving them a lot of good advice to succeed in life. But I wanted to come and address you guys in a formal way that will help benefit the kids. And I always tell people, it's all about the kids. That being said, there's a couple groups that I'm trying to help in the city of Pittsburgh. And one of them is the Pittsburgh Black Media Federation. And what they have every year, they have a journalism workshop in honor of Frank Bowden, who was a legendary reporter here in the Pittsburgh area. And I have information if the board would like to have it. I can pass it out to you. And that every summer around the end of July or the middle of July, they have what they call a journalism workshop, which is very intensive. Broadcasting, podcasts, to you name it. Some of them even do live broadcasts with KUKA. And I said, well, let me approach my school board at my district. And I said, I know our money is tight, but I will try to fundraise $1,500 if I can do that, if the school allow me to use the facility down in Altonum sometime or another, that maybe we could have four or five of our kids. It doesn't matter what color they are. We always preach in diversity and that's what it's all about. That, I don't know, maybe the school board or maybe the superintendent will pick four or five kids up at the high school to participate free of charge. I'll raise the $1,500. I know sometime they have where they stay at Point Park University for a week in the dorms or sometime they have to go four consecutive Saturdays. And at the end of it, they have a graduation at Point Park University. And they go over certain things where the parents can come and see what their kids have achieved. They get a certificate and some other type of thing. And it would be a good thing for our students, in my opinion, to be involved in. And I would hope that the school board would go along with it because it's a very good program. As you well know, we are always talking about diversity as well as technology in CV. And I always want the best for our kids at CV. They all know, I always tell them, be the best students in the world. And I want them to be the best students in the world, literally. The other is, now I'm sure the attorney will get a kick out of this. Fairview Park in Murraysville. He might know where that is, right there in Murraysville, Salem, town someplace. I don't know. I'll try to get familiar with it, but I think he may know. It's the first and only African-American amusement slash park in Pennsylvania and east of the Mississippi. And I thought, and hopefully the board would consider that, and the superintendent. Maybe sometime, it may, you know, when the kids are thinking about getting out of school and all that kind of stuff, that, well, intermediate kids, because I'm very partial to the intermediate, that we could all load up, you know, there'll be refreshments out there and everything for them, you know, the kids and everything. I'll make sure that that'll happen free of charge, just provide the buses. I'd be grateful. The staff and everything. We go out there. I think it's a good history thing for our kids. They just, this year, I went to it this past Saturday. They got their national registered parks from the state of Pennsylvania. Now, we always preach in diversity, I think it'll be a good thing. Now, the attorney may know, I think it's 52 acres out there and it's very nice. They have other things that the kids can play with and so forth and so on. And I was hoping and praying that maybe that can come to fruition. That's why I wanted to talk about tonight. That's why I wanted to come tonight, to bring it to your attention. And hopefully the school board will be so kind to consider it because, once again, it's all about the kids. Now, my tenure is coming to a close at CV during the 2017, 2018 year, thereabouts. I stayed, I was going to retire on May 31st, but I stayed because there was a student at the intermediate that lost their father a few years ago. And they, I guess, took me in like a father figure, what have you. And they just couldn't see me, they didn't see me. And their mom came to me here when we had our Valentine's Day celebration here at the school. And she said, Mr. Wilson, you can't do it. You can't do it because my daughter has problems. And she has, sometimes she has difficult days. And I'll walk around and talk to her and I'll bring her around, let her see the administrators, and it gets her back on task. That's what it's all about. I'm hoping that as I close my illustrious career here at CV, I try to enjoy the sunshine in Florida, that, you know, some of the staff members got me hooked on Sees to Keys when I really enjoyed it this past summer. That I have a dear friend out in East Olive Garden, he's a superintendent out there, Mr. McFadden, dear, we're personal friends. He doesn't have a doctor that I know, or maybe he does, I don't know. I don't think he does. But I'm hoping and praying that while CV is in their transition for a new superintendent, what have you, that you won't have to look too far because I do believe that man sitting right there, Mr. Selsa, is your man. He knows diversity tactics. His mom was the secretary of the NWCAP in Newcastle. Great family, great legendary status there. Done great things for the community. And I think that man right there will be your man to lead CV in the near future. Now, if you're looking for a minority far as assistant, what have you, I can help you. There's a lot of folks. But I will tell you this. That man right there, I know school boards always look for the doctors and all that kind of stuff. I don't know, he may have it, I don't know. But I will tell you right now, that man's soul is right for CV. And you have a jewel right there and you really don't have to look any further, to tell you the truth. I want to thank you for allowing me to have your space. And I enjoyed seeing a lot of you guys as school board members slash parents. And I enjoyed your kids, I enjoyed the kids, and I enjoyed all the staff at Charters Valley. And Charters Valley, in my opinion, I said this on the radio, I said it on TV, far as I was concerned, CV is one of the best schools in the country. And wherever I go, wherever I talk, most of y'all don't even know my status outside of this, which is a very, I think, pretty significant. CV is always at the forefront, far as I'm concerned, in education. You guys have done a good job, far as the students and the buildings. The building that you're building is, and I tell all the time, I keep it all the time, you look on that internet, that school building up there, what they're building, it'll make you proud. I know it's expensive, but it's like a college campus. And it'd make any parent that has a kid in CV proud to be at CV. Thank you very much.
Sally Scholtenberg, according to Mitchell Drive, passed CVFT president. Again, I'm here, do you know how many rumors are out there? There are so many rumors out there. Did you know that the bridge fell down last week?
This is the rumor mill.
It is the rumor mill. Anyhow, I'm here to ask about another rumor as far as where we're at with staffing at the primary school with those extra students in classes. The rumor out there right now is that the Spanish teachers are going to fill those two positions. And so, I'm here to get an answer to the rumor, basically, if there's something to add.
So, in our executive session, we talked about personnel selection. And that is the decision to move the Spanish teachers to kindergarten positions in library locations.
Kindergarten and other positions. So, are there more than 16 kindergartens?
No.
No, there's 16?
Yes.
No?
15.
15, okay. And we're not adding to the second grade? No, okay. I'm just asking because I try to dispel rumors where possible.
So, I would just ask that we be really sensitive to this information because I'm not, the people brought them in.
Well, and that was my other duty, these folks know yet.
So, I just want to be really sensitive to that.
Yeah. Take care of that. That's fine. The other, I guess, the other piece of that now will be that if we don't have Spanish in the primary school, we'll need to revamp the curriculum to reflect that.
We hope to collaborate.
Yeah, we'll collaborate.
Oh, yeah, no, I just, like I said, there was rumors out there and I know I'll get a straight answer and I don't want, I want to stop the rumors. That's my whole thing.
They were stopping.
Well, I can try. But, yeah, that's, that's the big piece of that. And can you address, for all of us, I guess, we were told by Jason that we would be able to be in the building on the 18th, but that's not happening. In the last meeting, Jason said that they were going to be able to turn the building and form the 18th to the district and that didn't happen because we've been told through emails from principals.
Well, I think there's a little confusion about turn over the building.
Okay, that's why I'm asking for clarification.
We started to move stuff into the building.
Okay.
So, actually, you know, I think there might be a little confusion about being actually that it's ours. I don't think that was ever intended. That we were able to actually get in, we're actually moving equipment into the school. So, they've done a great job, our custodians and our moving help. They've just done a wonderful job moving, getting things organized, cleaning while they're moving. They've done a great job. So, as far as punch lists and all that turned over, I think that it was more that we couldn't start moving in. And actually, we got in there before that.
That's it, because again, that's another one of those rumors that's out there. I'm just biased about that. Because I know at the middle school, they're planning an open house from the 7th of September. So, that's a pretty fast turnaround for everybody that walks down.
As is, we will start soon. So, then that, September 7th will be awesome.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, guys. Michelle Sedlack, 15, nobody signed in. Like literally four people. I know like 100 people signed, so I'm not signing either. I'm going to be a renegade. Michelle Sedlack, 1595, Spurting Up Drive. And I wasn't going to speak again either, but my gosh. Like, once again, this is the conversation that we're having again and again and again. I'm hearing that there's not enough money for the science teachers to order supplies. We can't add another autistic support classroom because we don't have the money. We can't hire staff because we don't have the money. And now, we're taking Spanish teachers and turning them into kindergarten teachers. And now, we're cutting food service where they're going to leave dirty dishes. And by God, I hope they do. I hope they walk out when their shift is done and that kitchen's a disaster and we end up with a rat problem in our brand new, nice, beautiful school. Now, I've said this at February meetings, March meetings, April meetings. It's enough. We're now cash poor. We got a beautiful house and we can't put furniture in. And I'm looking at all of you. And I don't know what you do with the information that people come up here and present. I don't know if you are required to take that back in your meeting and discuss what is said, what is said about bullying, what is said about diversity. And yeah, this school district could use a little help with all of it. I've been very quiet about stuff like that. I've been trying to be helpful and everything else. And now, I've sat here long enough that I'm angry. So, do with the information what you like. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful day.
Okay. Would like to get a motion to adjourn?
May I say something?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Couple minutes.
Not personal, but I don't away. I was fortunate enough to be here when he came aboard. And let me tell you, he walked into a mess. I'm arguing because I never voted for the past administration. He walked into a mess. And I don't know of another individual who would hold off. His outstanding service, he has depended on that. Everything the man did, he took his school apart, put it back together and piece by piece. He brought in fantastic staff. He engaged public employees. He put hours and hours and hours into this school district. And I've gone through seven superintendents, so I think I have a little knowledge. And I've gone through four at the IU. So, I just wanted to thank Dr. White, his incredible service. What he did to our school district, he made it very, very respectable again. When I was on the IU and I would be out in the county, everything was great about Charters Valley, how we were upcoming, upcoming, upcoming. And he never, ever stopped that vision. He always had that progressive vision to make us better and better and better. He will be truly missed. And not only are we losing superintendent, we're losing a good friend. And he will be truly missed. I just wanted to say, thank you. I know, I, I'm, I'm mad.
Get a motion to adjourn? So moved. Support seconded by Mr. Kearney, all in favor? Thank you, opposed, and me.